Can you take a break for a second? I think there was somebody that needed to speak in the public forum.
Oh, okay.
We're verifying if that's the case.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next three items on your agenda are related to alcohol sales condition use permits. As you may or may not know is that anyone that distributes, sells, stores, or manufactures alcohol in the city of Santa Fe Springs is required to apply for alcohol sales condition use permit. Can you hear me? I believe it is. I can hear myself on the speaker.
Must be me. Sorry.
It's okay, Wayne.
Well, he wanted to break it up. It's okay.
The end of the month, right? So the first item on your agenda is case number eighty-two, which relates to a restaurant that's just down the street from us. It's commonly known as Crazy Tokyo of all names. They are a restaurant where that sells sushi and a lot of other Asian foods. Very good place to go and eat. They're located at eleven five three two Telegraph Road within the promenade. There's currently about ten other eating establishments in that promenade nowadays, so. And it's a place to go and have your lunch and enjoy the area. If I get this to work. Okay, in regards to the zoning, there's the area there in the promenade is zone C four P D, which is a commercial, a community commercial plant development. The area surrounding it is our zone, R one and R three P D. The shopping center across the street of on Orin Day is zone C four. So there's no impacts or there wouldn't be anything out of the ordinary. We do have other alcohol sales, sales locations within that area. The Japanese restaurant, again, like I mentioned specializes in several Asian dishes, but are well known for their sushi. Crazy Tokyo would like to serve beer and sake to their customers as well as their current food items. Then that's because they're going to be selling alcohol for onsite consumption. They are required, like I mentioned, conditioned. They are required to have a pipe for a conditional use permit. Concurrently with this application process, they are also petitioning to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board and asking for a type forty-one license, which is an onsite, on sale beer and wine for an eating establishment. If, if for some weird reason, they don't get that license, they will have one year to make any modifications and try to get that license. Otherwise, if you approve this permit, it would become, become a void and also would not be effective anymore. So they have one year to comply with that. Legal notices, just like all the other three cases that I have, legal notices were sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of the property. In this case, although they only occupy a certain suite, we took the five hundred from the extent of the actual whole promenade. So everybody within five hundred feet of that promenade was notified. We also advertised in the Whittier Daily News, both advertisements and notifications were done on June twenty-ninth. Today, we didn't hear anything or have any replies from any of the community members. And again, like I mentioned, compliance with section one fifty-five point six two five, you are required to have a conditional use permit. During that process, we are required to look at, it is about thirteen sections to see if there's any impacts to the community. On your reports, there are some findings that we wrote on there and provided to you. If you have any questions on any one of those findings, please let me know at the end of the my presentation. I'll answer any other questions. But rather than go through all, every one of them, I could just say that there are going, not going to be any impacts to the community. They are a restaurant. They are subject to our regulations and to ABC's regulations. And one of the concerns too is will kids be able to have exposure to that alcohol? It's a family restaurant. So obviously, yeah, so you will have access to or exposure to it. So today, we're we're requesting that you approve or make a recommendation to the city council to approve condition use permit. Alcohol sales condition use permit case eighty-two or Crazy Tokyo. I can now answer any questions if you have any. Yes, sir.
Right next to Pascala Dorado?
It's, if you know where Pascala, Ohio is, if you walk to the east, there's that, that middle part with the benches and then that's right next to it.
They sell alcohol there?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now I'm glad I said this, neither one of the two establishments are allowed to let their customers drink out in that patio area. So that's restricted.
Lou, how's our operation? I was going to get to eleven o'clock at night?
Yes.
Is there a cutoff for alcohol sales?
Yeah, ABC requires the cutoff at two I believe it's at two AM. So they
Up until closing?
Yeah, so, but they're not going to two AM. That's not their intent. Their intent is not to become a bar or anything like that. Yeah.
All right. And can somebody purchase alcohol only without purchasing food?
That's a good question. We didn't restrict it. That's a good question. We did not restrict it and ABC does not restrict it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? I've eaten there and I think it's fabulous. The place is spectacular.
Oh, yeah.
Spotless and it is the best food. I shouldn't say that, but I liked the other ones, but it is spectacular, spectacular there. And the stuff is great.
Yeah. That's good.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so I would like to open the public hearing at six twelve. I would like to call upon the applicant or applicants. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Steve Kim. Thanks for this opportunity this evening. I represent the owner, Alina Chungri. And let me just say, first and foremost, I just want to thank Mr. Luis Colazo for his professionalism and his expedited service. He's been simply an angel working with him. It's been a pleasure working with him. Having said that, I have nothing further to add, other than the fact that this is a family-run operated restaurant. It's six restaurant that we're opening in the city of Santa Fe Springs and we're extremely happy and glad to be part of your business community. One of the commissioner mentioned the alcohol sales without food. We will volunteer that alcohol sales will not happen, cannot happen without the purchase of food. Keep in mind, as Mr. Colazo alluded to the fact that this is a bona fide Japanese sushi restaurant and we want to provide the variety of cuisine that's readily available in this community. And once again, we're very happy to be part of the city and the business community. And I urge and I vote on our item this evening. Thank you very much. And I'm here for any questions.
Any commissioners have questions?
I'm not against them selling alcohol without purchase of food. And I'll give you an example. Just over this weekend, we were next door to Veracruz, my wife and I. And we decided to go in there for some margaritas. Well, that turned into us purchasing food. But initially, our intent was to just go in there for a couple of drinks. And I would hate to take away from this business with that, you know, someone going in there with the same intent. And then possibly ending up purchasing some items of food as well.
That's great. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use a raise hand function as well or approach the podium.
Madam Chair, there's no other raised hands.
Thank you. And there were no comments submitted. Right. Okay.
Man received.
Okay, I would like to close the public hearing at six twelve PM. Do the commissioners have any other comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for deliberation, of course. Is there a motion to approve resolution number two, three, nine dash two, zero, two, three for alcohol sales conditional use permit? Number eight, two.
Make a motion.
Second.
Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chariala?
Aye.
Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five, zero.
So ordered. Thank you. Attorney.
No, it's okay. I'm not used to being the one having to do this. Um, so the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt of by the applicant of written notification of the commission's commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the clerk with the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight, public hearing again categorically exempt sequel guidelines, section one, five, three, zero, one. Last one, alcohol sales condition, conditional use permit. Case number eight, three, I would like again to call upon Luis Colazo.
Hey, commissioners, your next case involves an alcohol sales condition use permit, but this time is for a warehouse and distribution activity. And it will be going onto a building that's currently vacant. The owners of the property, the owners are also the applicants of that property, which is located at ninety-five, twenty-five Ann Street. Like I mentioned, the building is currently vacant. They are moving from La Habra. They're moving their facility from La Habra into Santa Fe Springs to allow them a little more warehouse room. So because they're requesting, oh, let me back up. They are doing warehouse and distribution. There would not be any sales or any retail activities at that location. Because they are storing and distributing the alcohol, it would require a condition to use permit. The property is zone M two, as well as all the neighboring properties that whole entire area is warehouse distribution. And they are also doing a transfer of their alcohol sales condition. I'm sorry, their transfer of their license from ABC from the La Habra location to this location. So that's being done concurrently. Again, if something, there's a hiccup there and there's something that goes wrong, they have up to one year to, to make some changes so that they can make that transfer. There's not, nothing seen that we could see that would prevent them from getting that transferred. And again, notices were sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of the property. And those notices and the advertisement for the hearing was conducted both on June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three. And to date, we have not heard anything from any other neighbors or any interested party. Again, we had to find, do some findings for that location to provide you with sufficient information on how and to make that recommendation for approval. Because there are distribution, warehouse distribution, we don't see any impacts or any negative impact that would be required generated from this location. Again, there's no retail. Everything is stored in boxes and things like that. So nothing is being distributed individually from that location. That would create a problem. There are schools in that area. But again, we do not see any, anything. And we make a recommendation that the planning commission recommend to the city council for approval of this condition use permit. And, and this will be good for one year, initial approval for one year and thereafter be a five-year compliance review for the location. I can answer any question that you may have for this location or this permit.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time? I would like to open the public hearing at six twenty PM. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use a raise hand function at this time.
They not, nothing. Not represented from the applicant.
No worries. Do any of the commissioners have any question? Well, they're not here, so. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function or approach the podium at this time. Do we have any via Zoom?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to call, oh, let's see here. I would like to close the public hearing at six twenty-one PM. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding this at this time for any deliberation? If not, can I have a motion to approve resolution number two, four, zero dash two, zero, two, three for alcohol sales conditional use permit? Case number eight, three.
I'll move.
Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Ayala? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chariala?
Aye.
Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five, zero.
Thank you. So ordered. Planning attorney, please.
The commission's action on this item shall become, become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Thank you. Item number nine, categorically exempt sequel guidelines, section one, five, three, zero, one, class one, alcohol sales conditional use permit. Case number eighty-four. And again, code enforcement officer Luis Colazo, please.
You're not tired of me yet.
Think you're fabulous.
Ah, you're awesome. That's two nice things they've said about me today. Awesome. Alcohol sales condition use permit case number eighty-three involves an office use within Heritage Business Park, Heritage Park Business, Heritage Business Park. And the applicant is twenty-first century spirits. They use this office for marketing purposes. So there's some alcohol involved here, but only for the storage so that marketers or salespeople can come in and pick up their marketing items. That's, you know, posters that you would see on, at restaurants or stores. And, and, and a bottle of their into vodka. So they have the, they have some examples of the vodka there. There's no distribution or there's no, nobody coming to the location that would be like a customer. It's usually just they're with their, their own staff coming in to pick up their marketing equipment. But because they store it, they fall into the category of requiring them to, to obtain a conditional use permit. The area is a zone M two, as well as the surrounding properties. The property across the street from Norwalk is the the housing development and it's R three P D. We do not see any impacts for the surrounding area. Because again, it's not really open to the public. The public's not even going to the location. They currently have what we call an umbrella license from ABC. So they're also petitioning that this location be covered by that umbrella. So they're not really obtaining a new license. They're just trying to get the coverage for that location as well under that current license that they have. But again, if that's not possible and the ABC rejects their request, they have up to one year also to, to make accommodations to get that approved. And like the other two locations, public notices were sent out to people within or property owners within five hundred feet of the location. Again, in this case, we didn't take it from the suite, but we took it from the entire property or that property line. So a lot more property owners receive the notices than than normal. It was also advertised in the Whittier Daily News. Both notices were placed on June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three. And we still have to have findings. We still have to provide you with findings and to show that there are no impacts to the general area. We have geezers, which never has any problems. We have maggies down the street, which has never had any problems. And again, this is just a kind of like an office type use, so we do not foresee any, any problems for it. And we're making a recommendation that the planning commission make a recommendation to the city council to approve conditional use permit case number eighty-four. I can answer any questions if you have any from there.
So being that the original license is, it's under an umbrella, so that original license is, was based out of another city or out of Santa Fe Springs?
Uh, yes. I apologize. I should have known what city that's in. And commerce.
Commerce. Now, do this sales to the, to the sales taxes that fall under that license, do they still come to our city or do they go to this, to the city where the original license?
There will not be any sales because not, no sales are occurring at this location. It's just an office use. It's kind of like a satellite office from their commerce location. So all the sales are happening and commerce are their warehouse and distribution is because is occurring in commerce. So it, it looks like they didn't have room for this person in commerce, so they put them out here and, and the city of Santa Fe Springs.
Okay, so if there, if there's going to be no sales, then why do they need the sales license?
They need a business license to operate in the city of Santa Fe Springs. Is that what you're referring to?
No, but it's an alcohol license, right?
They need an alcohol license because ABC requires that they have, because they're maintaining alcohol on their premises. It requires them to have that license or at least the coverage from that umbrella license.
Are there any other questions?
So are you saying that they're maintaining alcohol there at that location?
Yes, and, and small quantities. Probably a case, maybe.
Is it being sold out of that location?
No. Again, one of their fellow employees comes in, they're going to restaurant ABC. They need some promo items. They'll pick up posters, they'll pick up giveaways, they'll do whatever they need and they'll pick up a bottle of vodka, because that's what they're specializing in. And that's what they take to, to go to the, to the location.
Any other questions for the planning staff on this? Or Mr. Colazo? I would like to open the public hearing at six twenty-five. I'd like to call upon the applicant to, if they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function at this time.
There's no applicant. I mean, there's an applicant, but they're not here today or not.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this? Okay. I would like to close the public hearing at six twenty-six PM. And is there a motion to approve resolution number two, four, one dash two, zero, two, three for alcohol sales conditional use permit case number eighty-four? May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
A second.
Planning Secretary, roll call.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Vice Chariala? Chair Carvajal?
Aye.
Passes five, zero.
So ordered. Lighting commissioner, attorney, please.
Thank you. The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk with the previously, previously mentioned fourteen day period. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, public hearing, sequo sequo analyzed in the adopt, adopted program E J R or E I R, excuse me, of the twenty forty general plan. Targeted zoning ordinance update T Z O U project. I would like to call upon Assistant Director of Planning Kwangwon to provide an update on item number ten, please.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. As part of the public notification process and as required by law, staff did publish a one-eighth page article in the, in the Whittier Daily News. Staff also notified the property owners affected, approximately six hundred and thirty-five properties were affected by the proposed actions. However, we recently discovered that an error occurred during this notification process. And approximately two hundred and seventy-one property owners received incorrect notifications. So this transpired when removing duplication of ownerships. As you know, some property owners, they do own more than one parcels and as a way to not send the same letter multiple times, we did try to remove the duplications, but the name field was inverted and we shifted. And as a result, the notifications contain accurate addresses, but incorrect ownership information. So to allow staff sufficient time to properly notify the two hundred and seventy-one property owners, we are recommending that this matter be continued to a special meeting later this month. A detailed presentation will be provided to the planning commission at that time. However, since the item was noticed and there may be property owners in the audience or on Zoom, staff is recommending that you open the public hearing, receive any comments from the public that is in the audience or on Zoom, and thereafter continue the matter.
Thank you. So with that, do any of the commissioners have any questions for our planning staff? I would like to open the public hearing at six twenty-eight PM. Is there anyone wishing in the audience to speak on this matter? If so, please raise your hand or approach the podium.
Madam Chair, we did receive a request to just, the planning commissioner. Angela Shu.
Thank you very much. A couple of you already met with Ms. Morel and Ms. Nguyen. This change of zoning that took place on the property, I think I was one of the property owners that was not notified when this first action took place. I do understand the reasoning behind this. I think it has to do with affordable housing and issues like that. My objection is the conditions put upon my property that be quite costly to me, that I have no way to be reimbursed for or are used. You've taken the, the property and now it's being declared residential if I move, or I can only lease to a person that is like for like. Well, today it's very difficult to find a heavy manufacturer to move in on a, on a main street in, in Santa Fe Springs. That's just not happening. So if I were to close my business or my business failed, I would have a building that I would be have to find someone that does manufacturing to lease it to or sell it to, or wait until someone decides they're going to build residential property. That's, that's how I understand it right now. So it, it puts me, more so really actually for my children. Plus, we also other conditions have been placed into it. Now, any work that we need to do on the Now, any work that we need to do on the property, I'm required to get conditional use permits. So while I understand the end goal is going that that property is going to end up being residential, that I'm not arguing. I think the conditions that were put on my property are unreasonable and I'd like them to be readdressed. I had someone that wanted to buy my building, the building next door, and we had thought maybe we'd move to a larger facility. And he backed out, he said, I'm not going to invest money when it's going to become residential. So I'm really in kind of a odd position. While I understand your reasoning, it affects me and I think one other property owner only, those two properties right there. And I would like the commission to look at it again and maybe we could come up with some resolution, a little bit more flexibility on what we're able to do or how we how this is approached. I thought when something like this happened, maybe the city would maybe do an eminent domain or buy the property and and develop it. But I don't think that's what you're planning to do. It's somewhere in the future, a developer will buy the property and it will become residential. So that also limits me on who I'm able to even sell the property to. So I would like the 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 commission to consider maybe reviewing this a little bit and and coming up with a something that's a little more palatable, for lack of a better word. So it's really, I don't have much more to say. I mean, we're a manufacturing business and we're happy there, but we understand things change. And some of the family, if we stay in the business, they'll move it one day. That's that's what will happen. I just, the conditions set forth, I just don't think are fair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Planning Secretary, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have Stephen Wondell via Zoom.
Thank you. And can you state your residence as well, please, for the record?
All right. Sorry, can you hear me at this point? Okay. Yep, so good afternoon. My name is Stephen Wondell, representing Golden Springs Development at thirteen one one six Imperial. First of, I appreciate this. I've been part of this effort for a couple of years as part of the advisory commission. So I think staff has spent a whole lot of time on this. I'll admit, I received the notice very late, so I didn't have a chance to go through all the documents. But the one document that I had seen, and I want to thank Director Morel and Assistant Director Nugent, is on the modification of the labeling for service stations. I think the change they've made is actually a really smart, provides for the ability to charge with hydrogen fuels and EV charging at service stations. I think that was a really heads-up move and I want to thank them for making that change. I think that will help the city over the long term in transitioning to alternative fuels. So thank you from us, appreciate it.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, do we have any others wishing to speak?
No, we do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to open the public hearing at six thirty-eight PM. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use a raise hand function or approach the podium, please.
The only who received was already has already spoken, ma'am.
Okay, and then Assistant Director Planning Fong Jin, how would you like us then? Is this, did we come about the meeting date that you'd like us to go to?
Yes, so before we get into the potential meeting date to continue this item too, I do want to acknowledge the public comments, the the letters, the calls, the emails that staff has received to date. I just provide you with a quick summary of that.
Please.
Up till today, we have received a total of seven. Received an email from a Matt Franklin on behalf of the Franklin family. The the email was particularly in regards to the non-conforming provisions. As you know, as stated in the staff report, that is on a separate track. We would like to have more collaborative discussions with with the property owners in regards to non-conforming provisions and that is therefore not being considered as part of this this project project. We also received a letter from the City of Cerritos. City of Cerritos sent a letter in regards to Sequa and specifically Cerritos requested that we review potential environmental impacts and specifically air quality and environmental matters. Just wanted to to point out that the targeted zoning ordinance update did analyze and was analyzed in the program EIR for the general plan. And the project is within the scope of that EIR. Therefore, there's no additional requirements as per Sequa. In fact, we did include a consistency findings in your resolution as attachment A to detail that. In addition to that, staff did receive an inquiry to have access to online versions of the document and maps, just so that they can read it and see clearly what is proposed. And a total of three phone calls. Two phone calls appear to be supportive of the change, especially as it relates to the city's intent to redo the entire non-conforming provisions and remove, among other things, the sunset provisions that are in place today. And one other owner did express opposition and a concern for the financial impact to his property. We received one phone call from our property owner. I left two messages but was not able to get in contact with that individual. So that concludes a summary of the inquiries received.
Excuse me, Kwong, did you mention the senior and junior that we met with today?
I did not, thank you, Wayne. This morning, Director of Planning and myself, we met with a property owner on Washington Boulevard. We did explain to both gentlemen the plans that we're moving forward with, gave them the background of the general plan and how this project is essentially just to bring these zoning documents to be consistent with that general plan effort. We also went over and provided them with the link of the current draft for the non-conforming provisions. And overall, they seem supportive of this effort with the understanding that the non-conforming provisions, they'll have an opportunity to participate in.
And again, my apologies, I do see on here. So is there a motion to continue to targeted zoning ordinance to the next planning commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 25?
That would be our recommendation and that would be a special planning commission meeting because it is not your regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you. And do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ayala. Planning Secretary Ro Calvo, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Vice Triella.
Aye.
Chair Carbajal.
Aye.
Continents passes five zero.
Thank you, so ordered. Number eleven, public hearing, Sequa adoption of mitigated negative declaration development plan approval, DPA case number one zero zero two. I'd like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong, who is at a conference and presenting item number eleven via Zoom.
Evening Commissioner, can you, are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me share my screen. Are you guys able to see the screen or the presentation?
No, sir.
No, okay, hold on. Okay, sure, so how about now? Is the is the presentation on the screen?
No, sir. We could see it on Vince's phone, but that's about it.
If that's the case, can one of the is it okay for one of the for you guys to just open the presentation? Isn't the Q drive?
They're working on it right now, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Jimmy, continue, please.
Okay, sorry about that. So item number eleven is development plan approval case number one zero zero two, next slide. And the project request is or a request to allow the construction of a new one hundred one hundred and four thousand nine hundred square feet concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvement on property located at one three seven one one freeway drive within the M two F O Z of heavy manufacturing freeway overlay zone. Next slide. Little background, the location, the property is a single parcel, approximately five point zero six acre. The address is one three seven one one freeway drive. The applicant is EPT Solution and the owner for the property is Rexford Industrial, one three seven one one freeway LLC. Next slide. The property is Zone M two F O Z, heavy manufacturing with a freeway overlay. The subject property was last occupied by Martinez Trucking, which is a transportation company. Industrial use are located on the north, east and west side of the property and the five freeway are located on the south side of the property. In addition to requests in December 2015, the planning commission had approved a conditional use permit case number seven five zero, a request by Bulletin Display LLC to establish, operate and maintain a fifty-foot-tall digital billboard with a display area of fourteen feet by forty-eight feet on the subject property. And that and that billboard will remain and remain on the property. So here's the existing site condition. So you can see the billboard on the property will remain and the building itself will be demolished and the new building will be constructed as part of the development plan approval. Next slide. Here's the land use map and the zoning map. Property to the north, north, east and west are Zone M two, heavy manufacturing and will be freeway overlay. And the land use destination for the property, general plan and installation is freeway commercial. And property to the east and west are also considered freeway commercial. Next slide. So just to go back for the project description, the applicant is proposing demolish the existing eighty-two thousand square feet building and construct a new one hundred and four nine hundred thousand square square feet concrete tilt-up industrial building on the subject property. Next slide. Here's the proposed site plan. There will be three driveway, two along freeway drive, one on Spring Avenue. The one circle in red is limited to passenger vehicle only due to the sharp turn. There will be nine dock high door and one grade level door for the entire development. And the trash enclosure is located in the area highlighted in green. Next slide. For parking, based on the square footage of the building, one hundred fifty-three parking stalls is required and the applicant is proposing one hundred fifty-four parking. And based on the size of the building, they are required to provide three truck parking stall and the applicant is proposing three truck parking stall. Next slide. Here's the proposed landscaping plan along with the landscape that are being proposed on the subject property. The applicant, the development will meet and exceed the minimum requirement for the landscaping. Next slide. There will be a five thousand square foot first floor office along with a five thousand square foot mezzanine and the rest of the building will be designated for industrial area. Next slide. Here's the proposed elevation. The applicant have incorporated glazing, use of wood panel, window eyebrow, decorative form liner and color scheme featuring brown, gray and white for the entire building. Next slide. Here's the other elevation. Next slide. Here's the proposed rendering. As you can tell, the building is in a contemporary design and is compliant with all the new building we have within the city. Next slide. Here's a close-up of the office area where the billboard is will remain and located. Next slide. As part of the California Environmental Quality Act review, the proposed project, after reviewing the proposed project, will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment following mitigation. Therefore, initial study mitigated negative deck was prepared for the proposed project and the document was provided to the commissioner by email on June sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. Also, a notice of intent was provided to the State Cleanhouse, LA County Recorder Office, Responsible Agency, the city local sequel distribution list and other interesting party. In addition, the draft ISM and D was uploaded to the city website and available for the public review. The review period was started on May nineteen, two thousand twenty-three and concluded in June nine, two thousand twenty-three. There were no comment letter received during the twenty-day review period. Next slide. As part of the secret review, a traffic screening was prepared by EPD Solution. Based on the screening, the project is forecast to generate fifty-nine more daily trip per the state of California OPR. A project can be assumed to generate a less than significant impact if it found to produce less than one hundred and ten project vehicle trip per day. And the city travel engineer have accept the traffic screening and determine that there are no additional study or detailed analysis are required. And also, please note that this project was submitted prior to the city adoption of the new transportation study guideline. So they were, they were, they were, I'm sorry, but they need to follow, they were following the old guideline instead of the new one that we adopted. Next slide. A public hearing notice was made on June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, also published on Whittier Daily News and posted at the Town Center Hall Library and the Kiosk. Staff received one supporting letter from the Santa Fe Springs Chamber. Next slide. For consideration, the project did meet all all the criteria in section one five five seven three nine for the granting of a development plan approval. The project involved the construction of a new physically appealing industrial building on a site that is currently that currently contain a building that does not meet the city current development standard. And the design of the new building provide high-quality architecture as demonstrated by glazing Papa recessed area and variation in height, material and color. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommend to approve and adopt the initial study mitigated negative deck and accommodating mitigation monitoring reporting program and also approve development plan approval case number one zero zero two, subject to the condition as stay in the attached resolution. And lastly, adopt resolution number two four three dash two oh two three, which incorporate the planning commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that concludes. And that conclude my presentation. I believe the, uh, applicant, uh, from E P D is present. I, I can't tell since I'm out there.
Do any of the commissioners have questions at this time for the planning staff, please? Okay, I would like to open the public hearing at 6:53 PM. Like to call upon the applicant's representative to Steve, Steven Masura to the podium to provide a presentation on D P A 1002. Please state your name and resident city, please.
Steve Masura, um, director of entitlements for Rexford Industrial Realty, Los Angeles, California. And we're waiting for, uh, PowerPoint to come up. Thank you. But good evening, Honorable Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, as I said, I'm the Director of Entitlements for Rexford and I also have our team available here tonight and virtually if there's any questions. Uh, I want to give you a quick introduction to Rexford and why Rexford brings unique benefits, uh, from our developments and to the cities we are in. And then add some supplemental information about our project and the benefits of the city. Next slide. This is, uh, this is just, uh, showing this, the location of the site which you've already seen, but it's on freeway drive just west of Mark Court. So this is just an area of the existing site as it is now. Next slide. And so Rexford is a publicly traded real estate investment trust. And we exclusively invest in Southern California industrial real street, real estate, and we have a proven track record of creating market leading development. We have over 350 properties in Southern California. And we are not your typical developer. That is, we are a long term owner and have our own in-house property management and leasing. So this means that we make sure our properties are well maintained for the long term and we are therefore able to retain high quality tenants for the long term as well. And then why do we want to invest in Santa Fe Springs? Of course, Santa Fe Springs is well located for industrial businesses and we love Santa Fe Springs. We have made significant investments in your wonderful city. We now own 17 properties in Santa Fe Springs and we are always looking to upgrade or redevelop our properties. This will be our fourth roundup redevelopment in Santa Fe Springs. And this location is a prime opportunity uh, for new class A industrial building where such space is strong, in strong demand and this project will support current market and employment needs. And this will also be a significant upgrade to an outdated vacant property that was built in 1966. Next slide. Just a little bit more about the project. Uh, staff provide obviously an excellent presentation of the projects. I'll just highlight a couple items and benefits. Um, as you can see from the rendering shown, um, this is a very attractive building. Key here is that this is a modern building that will be a lead gold certified building and this will serve to attract a high quality, long-term tenant and significantly upgrade this area. And will be a greatly enhanced building to be seen from the I five freeway. This will also be a big plus since the existing beautiful billboard sign that prominently displays the city of Santa Fe Springs logo will now have a much more complimentary and appealing building next to it. So I think this will be a much more eye catching for everyone driving on that free, I five freeway and seeing that, uh, beautiful billboard as well. Next slide. Um, this is a graphic example of some of our lead gold elements in our projects that, um, that shows, you know, basically it's a more environmentally friendly building with reduced carbon footprint, footprint impacts um, for both construction and operation. So our buildings will typically have solar ready roofs, skylights or natural light and LED lights that significantly reduce energy use. EV charging, enhance HVAC systems and exhaust fans for indoor air quality and outlets at the truck docks to reduce engine idling, to name a few. Uh, next slide. And we Rexford E S G goals, um, we greatly support, um, a lot of local organizations and this is just a few of them here. Um, that, that we have, that we support and we also are members of the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce. Uh, next slide. And we've gotten letters of support from the, the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce and, uh, the local laborers union, Leuna. And we have representatives from the unit here tonight. And I think there's no chamber representatives here, right? Uh, but I know Kathy thinks here in spirit, um, uh, to support the project, um, but we really appreciate um, their, the unit and the chambers, local support of the, the community as well and their positive roles and in working, in working together with them in partnership. Uh, next slide. Now, uh, highlight a few of the economic community, community benefits. Um, you can see listed here, there are many economic fiscal and community benefits. The new classic building will certainly update and modernize the site and the area. And this high quality flexible development will be a catalyst to continually improve the surrounding area and in increased property values. The lead gold certification will provide for a more environmentally friendly building, of course, and reduce carbon footprints. But it will also be, uh, add, add, add a higher value to the building and to, um, to the tenants as well to attract more desired tenants that, that are looking for, um, energy efficient buildings. Our new development will provide approximately three times more property assessed value than to the city than what's existing there now under the old property. So the new development will result in increased revenues to the city from property taxes, business license fees and taxes, utility taxes, school fees, sales taxes and, uh, various permit and public, public art fees. And that concludes my presentation. Um, there's one more slide though, that just shows more renderings. Um, one of the rear, if you wanted to see that, um, in that, just by the way, that that having the loading in the rear is very well screened from any public view. Um, but that concludes my presentation. You're available to any, answer any questions and thank you for your time and consideration. I thank you for, for staff's time as well for putting this together.
Thank you. And do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Nice looking building. Be nice.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function.
Uh, before the gentleman speaks, I would just like to acknowledge Jimmy didn't mention it because he was not. He did not receive the letter, but we did receive a letter from the Mr. John Prestado. You say the from the Southern California District Council of Laborers. I just want to, in case you're there to acknowledge that, yes, we did receive your letter and it was made part of the file.
Thank you so much for that acknowledgement. It is well appreciated.
Thank you, sir. And if you can please state your name for us.
Honorable Commission, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Baez and I'm a proud member of Labor's International Union of North America and I fully support this project as well as my brothers here with me tonight. For all the good tidings that this project will bring. This developer has came into town with the utmost integrity to infuse private money into the community, which will multiply and expand out in many different directions. They've decided to make the benevolent sacrifice of paying top dollar for union contractors to build this facility to the highest standard possible. Perfection is part of our culture. It all, they also are ensuring that every measure of safety will be implemented on site as well as every worker will receive a full benefit package, a full medical for them and their family, full dental, optometry, uh, pharmaceutical, as well as an annuity plan, a pension plan and a dynamic training program with California accredited teachers that is hard to be compared to any other. We have a very modern facility that offers every one of our members the opportunity to better themselves and upgrade their level of skills. They've decided to make this sacrifice versus hiring non-union contractors where they would make a larger profit but would have little to none, uh, training opportunities, little to none benefit plans as well as very little safety implemented into the site. And also there's always problems with non-union contractors not paying their workers, uh, sufficiently. Honorable Commission, every one of us that have came here tonight, we all have kids, we all have families. These projects are very dear to us. It's how we continue to pay our bills, be upstanding citizens, provide food for our children, uh, pay for their schooling and all the other things they need. Us as well as most likely are somewhere around 20,000 of our members who live here in Los Angeles County depend on these particular projects. Once we finish these projects and leave, we, uh, also make men's and relationships with the people we work with. They help us to get on the next projects. These are part of the lifelines of our career. When we leave, we also leave the opportunity for the people of this community to get jobs in these facilities. A lot of these types of projects offer part-time jobs. All of us who have kids that are in college, we all know they're always looking for part-time jobs. Elderly folks that have to come back to the field, unfortunately, come to these facilities looking for employment as well as young people who are interested in sales, management and those new to the field of, um, of working. These particular projects offer so much as well as yearly revenue for the city offers, which can be used for rehabilitating infrastructure, utilities, community programs and so much more. So I, I really implore you tonight to consider all the good things that this project will bring to our community and the applicant who has a history of attributing to community development all throughout our beautiful state. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? I would like to close the public hearing at 7:03 PM. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter?
Great speech.
Thank you.
I want to join.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 243 dash 2023 for adoption of mitigated negative declaration and development plan approval case number 1002? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Commissioner Mora, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ayala, Planning Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Hi.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Hi.
Commissioner Mora.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ayala. Chair Carvajal.
Hi.
So ordered. Planning Attorney, please.
Thank you. Uh, the commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written note, notice of the commission's action. The applicant and, and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14 day period. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12. Presentation 2023 Planning and Development Department mid-year update. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Viss Velasco to please present item number 12.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the remaining audience. They say, uh, time flies when you're having fun. And, uh, believe it or not, we're already halfway through the year. So, um, I wanted to provide you with this mid-year update. We typically provide you with an end of the year, um, but obviously 12 months, it's a lot to cover. And so we felt it would be appropriate to kind of see or show you where we're at at this point of the year. So as far as planning entitlements, we're currently at, uh, 18 entitlements. We are currently behind where we were, uh, mid-year last year. However, last year we had a few, um, bigger housing projects that had several or multiple entitlements. And so that, that kind of didn't carry over to this year, um, but we're, uh, hopeful that, uh, the second half of the year will continue to bring in multiple entitlement projects uh, and continue our, our trend for entitlements. And for building permits and their valuations, you can see, uh, comparison between 2022 and 2023. Um, there is a very big difference. As you can see, we're already, uh, 431 permits above where we were mid-year last year, um, and approximately, uh, 55 million dollars ahead. And, and this is not the, the fees that are collected. This is the valuation of the work. So I just want to make sure that is um, clear. And I'd like to thank Teresa, who wears, uh, multiple hats in our department uh, for providing this information and doing an awesome job with our building department. And for the project updates, uh, starting with housing, we currently have six housing projects underway. Uh, we have one that is currently under construction on Florence Avenue. We have, uh, five others that have been entitled, uh, and also going through plan check at the moment. Once these projects are complete, we'll have a total of 325 new housing units with, uh, 271 of them being affordable. For the commercial side, we have Chick-fil-A, Sonics and a multi-tenant uh, commercial center that is expected to host Dave's Hot Chicken. And then from the industrial side, we have seven projects that are currently under construction. And we have one going through remediation work. And we have another eight projects that are upcoming. And, uh, you know, should either be in plan check or currently on hold for various reasons, but, uh, we expect them to be constructed in the future. And from the advanced planning side of things, we have the transportation study guidelines, which as you know, was adopted in April of this year. We have the objective design standards toolkit, which was presented to, uh, last month and will be presented to city council in a few weeks. We have the targeted zoning ordinance update, as you know, which will be presented at the next planning commission meeting. Uh, we also have the non-conforming situations, which is pending. We have the housing element update. The, uh, third draft was submitted to H C D for informal review on May 30th. So we're hoping to have that, uh, the housing element, uh, adopted and certified uh, by the end of the year. We have the accessory dwelling unit guidelines and handbook. And we're hoping that the ordinance will be adopted by the end of this year. And lastly, we have the city-owned digital billboard along the 605 freeway. We have provided the, uh, design team with feedback and we're hoping to receive comments soon or re-submit a, I should say, soon. And we're hoping that the D P A and operating agreement for the digital billboard will be presented to both planning commission and city council by the end of this year as well. Um, so that's all that I have and we're ready for the second half of 2023. Hopefully we can, uh, continue to make you proud. And, uh, you know, we look forward to the actions that, uh, you bring to the table as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any questions from the commissioners?
I do have a question. In regards to the, um, Dave's Hot Chicken area, uh, who is in charge of keeping that place clean or, um, minimize the homeless encampments there? There's, uh, there's a guy that has built like a two-story home in there made out of wood. Um, and there's a couple of surrounding homeless people setting up camps as well, um, on the outside.
So we since sold the property, so the responsibility is is the new property owner. But they were cited by the county agricultural department, so they've cleaned it up. But when they tried to remove the homeless people, they essentially said, go punk, son, we're not leaving. We're only going to leave with the police being here. So I know they reached out to, I was told they reached out to and first stop. Not leaving. And I just had this conversation just last Friday with the owner. So we have to work with the, with Michelle and Louis to the issue. Louis said, you want to add anything on Michelle, but you that uh helped us in the past when that issue has come out. You've had a presence out there to make sure but other locations city.
Uh Madam Chair, before we get going to that, I think it's going a little off topic because this is just a mid-year presentation and you're now asking about a specific item which is not agenda, so I don't think we should really get into that. I think that's, you can say, Kate, can we have a future item um at the end of the, the meeting, but I think we're getting a little off topic right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners regarding this presentation now? This will move right along to number thirteen consent items. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion, a roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the planning commission. Or consent uh agenda items number thirteen A, B, C. Is there a motion and a second for the approval of item number thirteen A, B, and C? Do we have a motion?
I'll move items A, B, and C.
Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second, please? Commissioner Flores. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Hi.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Hi.
Commissioner Mora.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ayala, Chair Carballo.
Hi.
Passes five zero.
So ordered. Number fourteen announcements. Uh, do the commissioners have any announcements they would like to share? And let's start with Commissioner Flores.
None.
Commissioner Jimenez.
None.
Commissioner Ayala, maybe now you can say it.
Yeah, now a good time? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So we can continue where we were.
Well, no, you, you can't continue. What you can say is I would like this, to have this discussion at one of our next meetings. And so they can put it on the agenda.
Discussion at one of our next meetings in regards to the property um where Dave saw chicken is going to be located.
We should, yes, acknowledged and noted and we'll have it on the next meeting for you, sir.
Commissioner Mora.
Um this time.
And myself, the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club is having their annual nineteenth annual scholarship foundation fashion show. It's called Paris Comes to Santa Fe Springs. There are currently four tables left. And if anybody would like to buy tickets, I have some where sponsored a table. And I like to thank again, he never likes to be brought to attention, but I will to our fearless leader or donating to the cause, Mister Morale. You're much appreciated. And yes, I will still be the cheerleader for the planning department. So um with that in mind, nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven fifteen.